We're gonna take a quick five minute break before you say it. Perfect, alright. Let us move along then. We'll move on to Committee of the Whole. And we will call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. Public Works and Maintenance, 1.1, request from the municipal superintendent. Is he here?
No, I mean, I'll be doing this just like Randy does.
Pardon?
1.1, the town signs agreement with Manitoba Infrastructure and Transportation every year for snow removal on the highways, which are located under the town. MIT pays the town per centimeter of snowfall, which is based on data reported by Environment Canada.
I think you're on the wrong one. I think we're talking about wastewater lagoon study.
Nope.
1.1?
Yeah, you're on the wrong agenda.
Okay. Hang on.
That's from January 11th.
Wow.
Agendas. Oh, what are we doing here?
Lock again?
Go to agendas.
Yeah, yeah.
And it'll be the second one on your list. Right there. Bam.
Too much sand?
I think that means it was a successful vacation.
Wow!
You can't go again.
Okay, what about that wastewater lagoon? No, I'm kidding. Okay. Snow removal, yes.
Do you want me to start over?
No. No, carry on.
MIT pays the town per centimeter of snowfall, which is based on data reported by Environment Canada. Last year, the town received $11,993 from MIT for snow removal, and there's been a 2.5% increase for 2016, which works out to be $254.35 per centimeter of snowfall. Resolution is required to sign agreement. Council's in favor.
So now we know how much snow is worth. $254 says centimeter.
Are we going to say annually?
Yeah. It's an annual agreement. Go forward for resolution. That's okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. 1.2, two hour parking. I'm on the same agenda.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Down parking has been an ongoing issue, and the town has received numerous complaints. An amendment to the parking bylaw, which was attached to this meeting, is addressing two hour parking downtown between First Street West and Fourth Street West, on both the east and west side of Fisher Avenue. And the bylaws attached, and it can go to council for February 22nd for first reading, if council's in agreement with it.
Okay. Any discussion?
What does the minimum spacing and maximum spacing refer to?
It's the signs, how the signs are replaced.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah.
We talked about this at the last committee of the whole meeting, so I don't think that this is right.
I was just thinking the word signs maybe should be in there somewhere, because it wasn't clear to me that that was for signs.
Between signs?
Yeah. A minimum sign spacing, or whatever, something like that, so that it's clear that you're talking about where the no parking sign, or the two hour parking signs will be.
Okay.
And it's good to...
So this is a bylaw?
Amendment to the parking bylaw.
Because we're adding the sign.
Counselor Rock, you look pleasant.
I'm just... I'm just... Has... Is this a standalone? Okay, this is an addition to...
The parking bylaw.
To the parking bylaw.
This is being added to the parking bylaw number 2265. We're amending bylaw 2265 to include this clause with it.
Got that? Reneging 2265 to add two hour no parking between First Street West and Fourth Street West, on both east and west side of Fisher?
Just... I know what's confusing probably is that bylaw 2265 has an appendix, is it? That is called a signing list. It refers to where signs will be placed, and what signs will go up. So where it says that the signing list attached be amended, so this clause doesn't actually go into the bylaw specifically. It goes into these appendices, which is the signing list associated with the bylaw.
Yeah, do we have two hour parking elsewhere?
Yeah, Cook Avenue. Down by the hospital, on the other side of the hospital.
Yeah, that was the part I wasn't quite sure of if we're... Because I'm concerned every time we do a bylaw or an amendment to it, that there's consistency and full understanding, so we don't get confusion after the fact.
That's precisely, I think, why we read and did this.
Yeah. It'll be the same wording as the Cook.
Yeah. And the signing list references specific locations and specific parking parameters. So it's not that you just identify two hour parking in here, here, here necessarily.
Okay, so we'll move that bylaw forward to our first reading?
One other thing...
Oh, sorry.
Was Edwards not going to be included in that?
We decided at the committee of the whole that we were going to do Fisher first.
Just Fisher first?
And roll up Fisher first, and then...
I just didn't want them left out.
It kind of makes it easier for the public safety officer too, to just have to monitor that one street for now until people get used to it, and then, yeah.
Okay. 3.1, marketing of lakefront lots.
The town currently has an agreement with Pineview Realty with regards to selling the lakefront lots. It is... Sorry. It was suggested last year to allocate money in the 2016 budget towards a marketing plan to sell these lots. A plan needs to be established, and it needs to be followed through. And Council Walsh brought this forward, so I'll let her speak.
So, yeah, pretty much last year when we were talking about the lakelots, we had said we were going to put some money in the budget for this year to market them. And I just think that like every 90 days, we have this contract with Pineview that we renew, and it doesn't cost us any money to do it, and it's going to be coming up for renewal at the end of this month. So if we're not going to be putting any money towards marketing lakelots, I think that we should just sign a one-year agreement with them, so that every three months, we don't have to go through this process of resigning an agreement.
I don't agree.
Any thoughts?
I don't agree.
You don't agree?
I'm fine with signing 90-day agreements. It's not that big of a deal. It's just a resolution, right?
I'd be more concerned about having a review of what services and what the process is, so that we're sure after we've been doing it for a while, that it's serving our needs going forward. I don't... The length of it doesn't concern me as much as are we getting what we want? Is it going to achieve the end goals? Presumably it will, but we need to... I don't want to do it on faith. I would hope that we'd ask for some clear indication as to what we get again, or what they're going to do. What's... Is the plan changing, I guess, is what I'm wondering, from current practice?
Okay. Anybody else?
I would just add that, I mean, we've just been through, you know, 99% of our budget here, and there's no money allocated for marketing the lakelots. The agreement that we have with Pineview speaks to some specific expectations on our part of him and of his part of us. And those are fulfilled to the extent that they're required to be, by the nature of the agreement that we extend every time. And so, I mean, for me, unless we're planning to change something in the budget, or somehow change what's going to happen in the marketing end of things, I'm okay with it going to a year-long agreement. I don't see that we lose anything. I don't see there's risk in it. And it might provide some motivation for Pineview Realty to perhaps push those things a little harder, potentially.
That's okay.
I'm fine with 90 days or a year. As far as the marketing plan goes, that should fall near the auspices of the CDC when it gets going, responding for that. That's what they're there for. Otherwise, we have duplication of certain operations, I guess, right? Two groups doing the same thing, so...
That's a very good point, because if we sign a year-long agreement with Pineview, and the CDC gets up and running, then that might not be the greatest of circumstance. If in fact the lakefront...
But then it's up to them, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing, is the lakefront lots a priority for the CDC or not? We don't get to set their priorities. But if you sign a year-long agreement with Pineview, then you can't exactly have somebody else take over marketing the lots.
Standard real estate contracts are 180 days or six-month contracts. That's what normally people list their house with the realtor for. They sign a six-month contract. I just... With the 90-day contract, it gives us the most flexibility, if and when the CDC does come to fruition and is operating at potential. If that's something that they would want to get involved in, or if whatever happens there, it gives us flexibility to do that. And it also allows us, if there's anything else that comes across our table within 90 days, we're not locked into a year-long contract with a realtor. It's just my thoughts on it.
Andrew, anything you want?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. I'm of the opinion that I'm not so concerned about the length, although I would rather have six months than 12, to be honest. I would want to... I would want to have updates. You know, perhaps every 90 days on what's being done. Anything new, or, you know, some ideas about what's... How the marketing process is going. I am of the same opinion when it comes to the CDC, if it's up and running. We don't want to... We don't want to burden them with things that we want them to do. We want them to move forward with an agenda, and so, you know, I don't know, six months, 12 months? I'm more inclined on a six-month or 180-day, and just an update every 90 days on what's going on. I don't want it to end up on the back burner. That's all. We have a lot of money invested up there. So... Where are we at on this then?
Continue with Pineview?
With an update every three months.
Okay, so are we going to sign a six-month contract or a 12-month contract?
I think we should do six. I mean, I know it's not a lot for us to just have to sit here and pass a resolution, but it does take staff time every 90 days when they have to either, you know, go and sit down with Pineview and go over things and whatever. And it's, I mean, it's not a lot, a lot of time, but I just thought that we've been doing it for a year and extending it for three months every time, so it might be a little bit more efficient if we just sign for a year or sign for six months.
Okay, so six months with an update every 90 days? Okay? Alright, good.
We have some people sitting here that are waiting to hear some conversation about a couple of agenda issues or agenda...
Oh, we could do that. Sure we can. I'm sorry. I just got to find it on... Okay, yeah, let's move up. We'll go all over the board here. Okay, so we're going to move up to 4.6, plastic bag bylaw.
Okay, so I received an email from Kirby in regards to the plastic bag ban bylaw. So as I mentioned in the council meeting, it was always our intention to ban single-use plastic bags, but there was some confusion with how the bylaw was interpreted, and some miscommunication on what was and wasn't allowed. Some businesses were told that it was okay to use biodegradable bags, and they have stockpiled them. Council came up with a solution, or like my recommendation was for council to come up with a solution to rectify the situation. Maybe we have a 60-day phase-out for the businesses who were told biodegradable bags were okay and have purchased a supply of them. I also suggest that we make another media release explaining that due to some confusion in regards to the interpretation of the bylaw, that we're instituting a however-many-day grace period for those who purchased biodegradable bags to use up some of their supply. But after said days, fines would be issued if businesses are not in compliance with the bylaw. I also suggest that we send letters to all businesses with the amended bylaw to notify them of the new start date. And there seems to be some businesses who did not realize that there was a ban and that are still using plastic bags, so we need to make sure that they're notified, so...
Pretty much, I mean, we had a discussion at the last committee of the whole about the bags, and again, we didn't change the bylaw. We're just amending the words in the bylaw to make it a little bit more clear.
Sam, what's... Can I ask Sam a question? What's... I mean, I know that when this thing came to the table, it's been in the works for the better part of four years. I mean, the major issue tended to revolve around the issue of cleanliness at the waste disposal ground. I mean, that really was the driving force behind making these changes. That's why Thompson did it. They were one of the first groups to do it. I think Leaf Rapids, Berlin Lake was the absolute first. But, I mean, there are some ramifications to it for the small business, or ramifications for, you know, the general taxpayer in terms of convenience and/or use. And plastic's not going away. I mean, people will simply substitute shopping bags for plastic bags that they buy in the store as... I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name?
Lynn.
Lynn, as Lynn pointed out. And I mean, we knew this, right, when we started down the road of this bylaw, but I don't know that biodegradable plastics had evolved to the extent that it has at this point in time. And I don't know that it's not worthy of a second look here to see. I mean, magnitude in general was one issue. I mean, I know for myself, we have two kids at home, and somehow I end up with mountains of plastic bags in my house, these single-use shopping plastic bags. And at some point, if I'm lucky, I get them turned over to the girl guide so they can turn into a bench. If I'm not so lucky, they end up going into my trash bag and going to the landfill, because they aren't recyclable, or they aren't able to be handled through our normal recycling process at our recycling center. So, I have a couple of trains of thought. One is, if magnitude is the issue, I don't know that that means that single-use plastic bags, whether they're biodegradable or not, the ban needs to apply to every single store in town. If there are small shops that are using them, then their magnitude in general isn't so large that perhaps their impact in the end is the same. And then you're going to have the argument at your doorstep of, oh, well, why should they get something different than us? I get that, but, I mean, fair does not always mean equal. So I'd like... I would like to entertain some wondering and thinking about whether or not single-use plastic bags that are biodegradable can be incorporated into the bylaw, what the ramifications might mean overall. Because if all it does is not change anything in the landfill, if we allow single-use biodegradable plastic bags, then everybody's going to go to single-use biodegradable plastic bags, and we still got plastic bags hanging from the trees. The fact that they're hanging there for five years instead of 5,000 is irrelevant to Manitoba Environment. They want them down, which means it's costing us money. It's costing the taxpayers money by us having to clean up these sites. As far as in-the-ground degradation goes, it'll be fine. If the stuff hits the ground, it hits the ground, it gets buried, it's great. That's not where our problem really lies. But for the small business owners, it is an issue at hand. And I mean, I know even for myself, it's one thing, you know, I go to Thompson, used to go to Thompson quite a bit for work, walk into Walmart to go and buy a bunch of stuff, pull my card up to the damn tail and be like, "Oh, they don't have plastic bags." And I don't have any cloth bags. So wheel the card all the way up to the truck, pull all this loose stuff into my truck, and drive home, and search for it under the seats and wherever when I get back to the park. And that's just an inconvenience. I mean, it's still possible for me to get my things from the store to my vehicle and home, and from my home into the house, but Lynn raises some good points, and I think they're worthy of discussion before we just kind of push forward with it. I'd be curious to know whether or not any other municipalities have made any changes since the biodegradable plastics have really... Because they have come a long ways, even from when we started discussing this four years ago. I think it's worthy of a look. I don't think we need to... This isn't an issue that requires that we pass it right away. If... And if there are impacts to small business, small business is a problem for us in wanting to make sure it remains viable.
I don't think so. Sure, step up.
Just for your guys, with my information, here's just a diagram of how many bags, 100, 1,000 plastic bags, 2,000 other bags going down. So, and there's our bags.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Lynn.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Rock?
Yes, I think it was pretty straightforward that we were passing a bylaw to ban the use of single-use plastic bags. And that was considered... It's really unfortunate that, one of two things, and I'm going to speak plain about it, is one, when a bylaw comes out, read the whole thing and understand it. And the second thing is, from this, from our operation side of things, if we don't know for sure, don't imply something that may be incorrect. I said, if the error of communication had been avoided, therefore, the problem wouldn't be here, because people wouldn't have went out and bought extra bags. Because that, to me, is what you're...
We called the town. Other people, businesses called the town. Everybody left different stories. Jim came into our store and was asked the final, if we could continue to use our biodegradable bags. And he said, yes. That is why when we go to the city, we bought a year's worth, because we don't want to pay the shipping costs that adds to us, so we know there'll be a lot. And we bring it home with us. So that's why when we were told, yes, that's okay, by Jim, he thought, great, yes, we'll go ahead and buy it.
And people make mistakes.
I agree, but my only point is, is because you made the investment in bags, and it's unfortunate, because you may not get to enjoy the benefit of it. And in part, it's that whole thing of whose responsibility is to it, and to read the bylaw and interpret it and apply it. We, as an individual, if you had asked me on the street, I may have made the same mistake and said, hey, yeah, that may... Sounds okay, you probably could. But just because I said that doesn't mean it changes the decision of council, which is written in the bylaw. And that's the thing, bylaws are decisions of a council. So no one individual in that can say, well, this is how I would interpret it, and that may be all you got to make a decision.
You should understand what your bylaw and what you're passing.
Yes, exactly.
And I, like, again, like, there was confusion around this table when it came back to the table, and it was like, some people thought that biodegradable was okay, and some people thought that it wasn't, which is why it came back to the table. And we're like, we need to make this clear, because we know that it's confusing to the public. And obviously, there was some misinterpretation on this side. But like I said, like, it was always the intention to ban all plastic bags, and it's really unfortunate that, you know what I mean? There was some misinterpretation, and you're kind of getting the brunt end of it. But that's why we... It's back at this table, and we understand. Like, we don't want to just go in and say, like, no, you can't, and slap you with a fine because you're using biodegradable plastic bags, right? Like, we understand that there was an error, and we're trying to come up with a solution.
And ours are actually the oxymedgradable, like, the bigger size, the ones we mainly use. And your recycling manager in her thing said that was the best kind.
Yeah, and, you know, the research that I've done, that's not really a plastic bag. That's like saying a styrofoam container is a styrofoam container when really it's a corn-based thing and it breaks down in 90 to 100 days. It's not, it's not, and so, you know, for lack of a better term, we call that a plastic bag when in fact it's not. So I do agree with Andrew that we really, I think we need to, we need to just drop back in and punt and revisit this. Because I know, you're called a dollar store for a reason. You're not a $20 store, and so your profit margins aren't huge.
No, they aren't.
And, no, and so, you know, you want to make sure that we do what's right.
And I do know, because they're, I call it in town, but technically mall, they do a lot of plastic bags, so it is affecting businesses. And it's hard, I just took rather than something that we could hand out to them, that is a bag. So people will still shop for us.
It is a learning curve. At some point, I remember someone saying when they were removing smoking from bars, and there were people opposed to that, and I remember Dr. Banks saying, "One year, you're going to feel really silly about the comments you're fighting for today." And this is another one of those, that at some point, it will be second nature. If you go to Thompson, people go shopping, they just bring their bags with them. Because that's what they do. And we will do that too, and it's not going to take very long, and we'll be used to it. But in the meantime, it's a real pain. And, you know, and I think you'll find that it won't be too far down the road, because there's already nothing quarish being made that, you know, that those outlying stores, if you will, will be on the same page here. So...
At this point, it puts the town merchants at a disadvantage when they're allowed that bags.
But I mean, I think those people that do shop all the different stores, at least the ones that I know, they're shopping off of flyers, you know? If they can save 2 cents on an orange, that's what they're going to do. And they do go to all the different stores. Then there's people like me that just go and buy stuff and move on, you know, so...
But we're not just serving the town of Paw. We have all the outlying areas that are coming in to shop too. They're the bread and butter.
They are, absolutely. Okay, anything else?
So this is coming back to town with this?
Okay, so Andrew, I would answer your question.
So, yeah, no, specifically, I would like to know a little more about what the biodegradable bag situation is, like, you know?
Some research?
Some more research into, you know, how legitimate it is. Not that I'm suggesting what you're doing is legitimate, but if we're going to make a decision based in science, then we want to have a look at that science, and whether or not that's going to address the actual problem. I mean, if everybody just goes to single-use biodegradable past... Single-use biodegradable shopping bags, and they still end up in the trees of the landfill and scattered all over the highway ditches and whatever, then we haven't addressed what the intent was behind the bylaw in the first place. But in doing that, we don't want to punish end-users to some extent that it's going to cause, you know, a business to go under, or, you know, a great loss to the business community, right? There's a fine line there between scratching your nose and tearing it off. And so, but for me, I need to know more about single-use biodegradable shopping bags, and then I need to know more about your opinion on whether or not the landfill is going to see any kind of recognizable change if we don't reduce the number of these single-use shopping plastic bags that are available in town.
And if we're looking at, sorry, are we going to be looking at the restaurants? Look at the fast food chains, for example, of how much garbage they take. Some of the places you go, and you're even just sitting in the restaurant, you don't get a plate. You get throwaway containers compared to how many bags we give them to do.
Yeah, I mean, solid waste management is a large issue. It's, I mean, it's an issue too, because that piece of infrastructure that we have is coming on to the end of life. And it doesn't, you don't have to take too many steps into the landfill to see all the recyclable material laying around there that should be out at the center, or even to just simply walk down the highway ditches, you know, when the spring cleanup happens. 95% of the material that gets picked up and sent to the landfill is recyclable. So, and those are education issues. Those are public and social issues. But in the meantime, we do have to try and manage things appropriately. So, you know, thanks for the information, and thanks for coming forward.
The other thing is, I would like to say is that, you know, so, hi, how do you know them? We do it one bite at a time. So we can't solve the world's problems with one bylaw, for sure. But, you know, there is a provincial election coming up, and I would encourage people to ask the candidates how they feel about... We do pay a levy on plastic bottles. We do pay a levy on canned drinks. And we don't get 5 cents for them. And where are they? They're in the ditches. If you go to Saskatchewan, they're not in the ditches. They're at the recycle center, because they get paid. And so I would encourage people to talk to their candidates about that. Not saying you have to base your vote on that, but it certainly is something that's worthy of discussion. Don't charge me a levy if you're not going to let me take advantage of it. So... Okay? Back to the drawing board. The other thing I did, and you can, you don't have to answer, I guess you don't, but I, my understanding is, is that the amount of product that you can put in one of these bags as opposed to plastic, they're not as strong.
No, actually, these ones, we throw everything in.
Do you?
Yeah. Since the by... Once we got rid of our plastic bags, we just went down to that size. And the department has to have to put, we load it with whatever.
Okay.
And I know Redbox was actually going to get the same bags they were looking into. They actually went and figured out costing and all that, and they were pretty much ready to order. They were looking at whether or not they could get below one.
Yeah.
And they were going to start using those because of how strong they are.
Yeah, okay, good, thanks. Anything else, anyone? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move up the scale into 4.9, taxicab bylaw.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. On Tuesday, January 26th, a number of councillors met with the taxicab owners and drivers to discuss the bylaw. The owners would like council to look at the following. And Crystal, Brian, Chad, and Margaret were all in attendance, so please, please jump in when you want. The fee for taxicab business license currently is $250. All other businesses are only $100. Plus, the bylaw requires each driver to pay $50 for a Town of the Paw taxicab business license. There was disagreement with two character references. This would be something a business owner would already request, and does a town really need it? Would like, the taxicab drivers and owners would like to see some type of probation period or timeframe that a person can drive a cab before they have to have all the requirements. And then the conviction section, section four, part five, B, C, and D, being driver convictions. And there was some concern with the appeal process as per policy FA 824, where there's only one person that would reveal the repeal, review the repeal. And I know Chad.
There was, other one was like the summary and indictable offenses.
Summary indictable offenses, and I couldn't enter any bylaws that touched those.
And removing the, like, assault is one of the offenses that would hinder somebody from getting a taxicab license.
So obviously, I wasn't there. Did you folks come to...
No, it was just a...
No, we had, we just sat down with the taxicab drivers, and then we said that we would bring it back to committee of the whole for discussion.
Okay, so first thing was the, then the...
The fee.
The business fee. The business fee. So, so it costs $100 for everybody else, cab drivers, or cab companies, it costs $250, and then each driver has to pay 50?
Yeah.
Part of it was administrative cost to us, right? Like, we were looking at that there was going to be a little bit more administrative cost to us if a taxicab driver was coming in, or a business was coming in to get a license, as opposed to somebody who, the dollar store, for example, just because they were right here. That it costs us a little bit more money to do the business.
That it, it costs us a little bit more money to do the business license for them as opposed to others. But I mean, we're not, um, I don't think we're opposed to looking at the fees and, and discussing them.
Yeah, I think maybe two fifty is a little bit, a little bit much. I don't think there'd be two point five times as much administrat- administrative work that would need to be done on the business license. I think we can easily move it down to even say a hundred and fifty dollars or, so I, I believe there is more than every other regular business in town, but I think maybe two fifty might be a little bit steep.
Thompson currently charges two eleven, Portage Le Prairie charges a hundred and Flynn Flynn charges nothing if they're operating in the commercial property area as they would pay a business tax. And then it's a hundred dollars if it's not caught within the business tax.
Okay, so we don't have a business tax, so, yeah.
No.
You live with a hundred fifty?
I'd rather go a hundred because like, I agree with you guys saying there's more paperwork you guys gotta take care of. But compared to the dollar stores myself, for example, I gotta go through a whole lot more work to bring the paperwork to new people than the dollar store does.
Yeah.
So why don't let's just put all a hundred dollars and also buy more paperwork to you than the dollar store works. Of all my employees, as a safety of like vehicles, conditions for vehicles.
So for the business license, each cab company gets their own business license, right?
I believe that should be put to the operating authority. I myself have one operating authority for three vehicles.
Right, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Larry Solson has one and he owns Cal's Cab. Then he's got Dave Saint Germain that has three taxis. They, or not Dave Saint Germain, Graham Totey has three taxis. And then he also has two taxis underneath another operating authority to give him five. The key thing when you have taxis is you gotta have an operating authority.
Yeah.
So even though in Cal's Cab, they may have five different owners, they're all under one name. So each owner of an operating authority should pay.
I agree. Yeah, how they set up, it's, if it's gonna cost them more, that's the way it is, but you, you have your setup, you look by one.
Graham, for instance, he's gonna put all five links underneath his name and pay one business license. But because he wants to be able to sell these three or those two separately, he made two different businesses operating under one.
Right.
So I have a source.
For each, for each business, each, okay.
And then like a city cab, you have four different operating authorities there. Cal's Cab, I think you've got four different operating authorities and then Blake's Taxi, you have one. I have three taxis.
So, I don't know, yeah, so what, so what you're saying is, is that if Cal's Cabs, Cal's Cab has five owners, each of those five owners is gonna pay a hundred dollars for their license?
You have to just think of it from a business standpoint. If I'm a general contractor in town, I pay a business license. If I decide to get some work and I hire Zalinski's Construction to subcontract for me, well, he's a business in town, he has to pay a business license. The fact that he's working for me is irrelevant. We both exist as businesses, so we both have to pay a business license. So if that's, if that's what this fee is meant to represent, then that's a fair, that's a fair application of that hundred dollar fee.
Should be consistent.
Yeah.
That's what we were trying to do.
So if I was to put operating authority within the bylaw, all cab owners would understand what operating authority meant?
Right.
Pardon me?
If I was to put an operating authority within the bylaw, all cab owners would know what that meant?
They, they should, there's no, or you.
Okay. I just, yeah, I'm.
Let's define it in the bylaw.
Yeah.
Let's not assume that people understand, let's, let's define it.
Define it and reference it as a business name.
They, they all get one operating authority to win it. I don't want two thousand and two.
They have to, they will.
And they'll never give me another one.
All they're operating a business, there's no way they're not registered as a business, whether they have a business license or not.
And they pay my, the owner, the guy we knew, if they never send me a new one, you always get a government stamp.
And if you want to add more vehicles to your fleet, then you're, you're, you're free to do that, so long as you have.
You have to apply through owner track and have approval.
I understand that, but you, but the way you're set up is you have one, you're the operating authority for Blake's Cat Taxes, right?
Yeah, if Cal's Cab wanted to come join me, like those guys, then if they've all entered Blake's Taxi, they'd all have to buy their own business license, which gives the Town of Paw more revenue.
Okay, good. What was the other point? Sorry, next one?
Oh, sorry, um, the character references. It was one request for a cab driver. Uh, interest of public safety, the driver must provide the following information with the taxicab driver's license application. Valid Manitoba driver's license, no lower than class four, current Manitoba driver's abstract. And there was concerns with two character references.
Okay, concerns from?
Yeah. That wasn't you?
No, I'm not worried about character references.
I think that should be left in, I don't.
I think, yeah, if it's, if the business, yeah, so I mean, if the, if the taxicab owners are requiring it, then it would probably be a matter of photocopying that reference and sending it on, right? So.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, next.
Um, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, probation period, so we talked a lot about with the criminal records check, so one of the concerns that came up is if they need somebody to drive cab, they need somebody to drive cab now, not in two to six weeks or possibly longer, depending on when your criminal record checks comes back. So something that we talked about was some sort of a probation period, so let's say Blake hires a new driver and he, he needs them to start driving like tomorrow and, like I said, not wait for the criminal records check to come back. So adding some sort of either proba- probationary period so that they can drive without a criminal records check for two weeks or four weeks. Fifteen days, right, was what we kind of threw out there while they're waiting for it to come back, but also being able to provide the town with proof that they have gone and applied for a criminal records check. And then if after the fifteen days it's not back, we didn't take the discussion that far, but we would probably need to think of something. I mean, are we gonna offer an extension if they're still waiting for them?
I think, I think if it came down to the fact that they were just waiting on their criminal records to check still, yeah, we could offer some type of maybe an extension or whatever. They'd have to come in and if they haven't received it after, yeah, they'd have to, yeah. Well, no, we would just say that, no, they just, no, they just lose it. They'd have to go to the.
So one of the things that, yeah, one of the things that in Rotary, for example, um, we have a, a youth exchange too, right now it's a girl visiting from scanning the country. So she is, I think she's fifteen or sixteen years old. So if we're going to do anything with her, like take her somewhere, you know, you gotta have, you gotta make sure things are covered. So we all have to go to the RCMP and have a, have a check done.
Every year.
And it, and it takes, you know, it takes five to ten days to get that information back. I see the need, sometimes you need to put someone in the car, you got a class four, you're driving. Well, I can see, I can see it happening. So we should not hold that process up. I agree. There should be some sort of a probationary period, but not a long, long one.
Well, we said fifteen days.
Got into a cab with a guy that didn't have a criminal record check that wasn't well-known to the owner, he just needed to put somebody in the seat and the guy drove off the Winnipeg.
And I agree with Andrew. I, I feel, I feel for you because we have the same issues and work, but it's gotta be up, it's gotta be upfront, otherwise you're running around trying to figure it out. You gotta have, before you scan the cab, you gotta have the criminal record check. I'm fine with the hundred bucks and I'm fine with the other stuff, but that one, I'm not cool with, right?
I agree with, I agree too.
The risk is too great, right?
We pull up before, like you weren't here too, but the one owner said he had a magical press driver who had several police charges and his customers loved him. You know what? Wouldn't be sitting in my cars. That's why I don't have a lot of drivers, that's why I don't like to drive night shift because there is not a lot of skilled people that can handle the customers here. I don't need to put a body in my vehicle like.
I, I can't believe I quickly, I changed my mind on that.
Thanks for fifteen-year-old exchange deal that you might have missing in action.
That's incredible. Took less than a minute.
I mean, it's not a dollar thing and that's what that one owner is looking for, it's dollars.
And the reality is.
You guys look at my taxis, I tried to have to clean this, they can have to clean this, but in that shape, that service.
The reality is you can get a criminal record check anytime. Like you don't, you know, I mean, the fact that, you know, criminal record check is a requirement of this job, well, if you're searching for work, one of the first things that you should be doing is getting a criminal record check because you don't know where you're gonna get your job, you're applying all over.
Yeah.
Nine places out of ten these days require a criminal record check and they're good for a certain period of time, they're valid. So, you know, I don't think that's an owner's thing and I would prefer that that remain in.
It is and it's not, I guess. What we had discussed when we were sitting here, we had said that the, we could have the owner of the, the taxicab company vouch for, for the people, I guess, in, in the interim while they're waiting for the criminal records check to come in. I, I guess I kind of feel for, it was Graham that had brought it up and, and I guess I can feel for him because I know what it's like to not have people when you need people to work and it makes it, and it makes it tough. And I, I get where you're coming from to, to have somebody not have a criminal records check and jumping behind the wheel of a, a taxicab and, and not having, well, that's what we're doing right now. That's what's happening right now, what's the difference to right now? And if, if these cab companies are not able to operate because they're not able to vouch for somebody, use their own best judgment in putting somebody behind the wheel of a vehicle, of their own vehicle, I, I think it makes it pretty tough.
Mike, can you just say something, Chad? Well, eight years ago, or what, maybe ten years ago, I guess, the Town of Paw changed the bylaw there that they required owners to get the criminal record check and hold it, not bring it to the Town of Paw, what happened? I went and hired a driver. Criminal record came back, may or may not exist. But all I felt, my commitment, that I got it done. House was the staff sergeant at the time. Three days later, he called me and he told me that I have to get rid of the driver. He's up on sexual assault charges in Saskatchewan. I said, I can't get rid of him. I called Norm Watkins and Norm Watkins said, now we're in a whole ball of wax. Cause you can't fire him. He asked, wait, otherwise he can sue you or whatever the process was. So if we allow them into the seats, that's gonna create a problem for myself or Graham that I think we should stay away from, like you're saying. If you want the job, get your paperwork, have it ordered, bring it here, and you look at it, good. You're in the car. You, no, you have to have your paperwork. You'll have to wait, sorry to say so.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate and I, I just want to say that like I was adamant on they need a criminal records check and they need a child abuse registry check. Like that was one thing that I was like, that is not coming out of the bylaw, like over my dead body, pretty much. But I, I, I do have some sympathy for the fact that sometimes you, you need somebody and you need somebody now. So, I mean, the fifteen days probation, so let's say they let them in the seat and fifteen days passes and their criminal record comes back and, and they have a record and we feel that, you know what I mean, like you shouldn't be driving taxi. There is something in there that protects the driver because they have, they're on a fifteen days probation and when you start a job, like even if you start a job anywhere else, usually you get a ninety-day probation and they say right there when you sign your offer of agreement. If they can let you go within the first ninety days for, for no reason, for any reason, and you can't turn around and sue them. So, I mean, I think that there could be a safeguard and like I said, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, like I totally see both sides, but like I, I appreciate the fact that sometimes you need somebody right now and, and you're kind of desperate and I can imagine the hardship that that would create if they had to wait three, four, five, six weeks for something to come back and they could have been making money, right? Like, I mean, I can appreciate that.
If you own five cars and you're only running two to three, I think you have time to build up the staff.
Like I said, just playing, playing devil's advocate.
No.
And hire somebody to drive my taxi tonight for two hours, it's busy.
No.
It's, it's a business, call it your own.
Okay. Brian?
With regard to drivers, it's, it's a business's responsibility to, to hire people and if it takes two weeks, it takes two weeks. Uh, I don't, I'm, I'm more concerned about the, the purpose of the, of the bylaw because we're really moving into a little bit the policing realm of people because probationary assumes they have a legal driver's license, they, they are capable, the business is licensed, all these things, everything's in place except we don't know whether the individual is trustworthy or not. And so we, we want a criminal record check to evaluate that and then we, then we write into our bylaw red flags that say, oh, if you got this, sorry, you can't, you can't hire him. Because really, we're telling the business people that what you can and can't do. I don't, I don't favor any kind of a probationary period because you can't guarantee me that they won't come back with a bad report. And if the incident happens prior to the report coming in, then we are probably potentially liable as a county town because it's our bylaw. You know, we have to enforce these things. They're not just, well, it was a good idea at the time and we, we have to have process on that. So the, the criminal record check, uh, one of the other things I was gonna mention about that is I understand now they gotta come to the town and pay the bill here and then they gotta go there and get, get the done and whatnot and I'm wondering if we could tighten up some of that. That's just, uh, just a question as to whether or not, I know, I, I thought before it was different, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, but you didn't have to pay for them before. So you would just walk into the RCMP and fill out your paperwork and.
Oh, well, maybe we need to look at.
They weren't free. They cost the town money.
Well, I know, but I mean, to the person getting them, right?
So now the person that wants the criminal record check has to pay a fee to cover the cost of the criminal record check. There was always a cost to the taxpayer.
Are we, are we back to the business fee?
Any other?
No.
Yeah, my first on my, when I got my criminal record done in December, it cost me twenty-five dollars. Now it's gonna cost me seventy-five dollars and fifty cents.
With the new fines and fees, yeah.
Okay, anybody else want to make comment on this?
Seventy-five dollars for a criminal records check from the RCMP?
Yeah.
Well, it's twenty-five dollars from the town, it's ten dollars to the RCMP, so that's thirty-five dollars.
Now it is, in December, it was twenty-five dollars. I come here, got two receipts, went to the police station, got all my checks done, done deal, twenty-five dollars. Now come January first, I come here, give you guys twenty-five dollars, then I gotta go to the town, or to the RCMP and I gotta pay them provincial, federal, local grants, everything else. And with that, I'm there. I don't owe any other businesses. The town requires them to have criminal record check. There's lots of businesses that require their employees to have a criminal record check. But not that the town requires them.
Okay.
Again, we, uh, yeah, we're not, we're not requiring the business, we're requiring the driver. So if you would like.
Any other staff from any other business in town is not required to help?
That's true, but it's a different.
No.
So, I mean, for me, I can't bend on that. If you, guy's driving the cab, he's gotta have his record check and child registry, end of story.
Okay, does, does the Town of Paw make you?
No, I do it because there's liability issues, right? And some departments are, they're dealing with lots of cash.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But I mean.
Town of Paw is making the deal to do it where it's your business.
You know.
You're, you're also in a different business, right? So I mean, we, we talked about this, like, so you're, you're transporting.
I'm not picking up kids, right?
Yeah.
You're not selling boots.
Or elders.
Doesn't pick up a one child when you have to stay in your hotel room?
Sure, right?
There you go, you're holding a child.
Yeah.
Does your vehicle have cars you do that in?
Well, they come with me.
Yeah, that's just the.
We're not getting anywhere. What I'm saying is like, there's liability issues for the town, for you. To me, that's gotta stay.
The only town doesn't have a liability issue with you, the bylaw, I want to think.
It's not the same.
It's, yeah, we're talking apples and oranges.
Hotel and taxi. Melville and Rose.
They're, they are apples and oranges and the reality is the province requires us to be the municipal convening authority on the taxicab thing. We didn't choose to be here. This is what the province has delegated upon us. So, I mean, the reality is, this is the only instance where we have this situation. I, I think we've discussed it at length. Let's call the question here. We got a meeting to go on with.
Yeah, okay.
If you feel, I wanna make sure you feel as though you've had a chance to express your opinions and stuff.
Yeah, there's still, there's still.
I agree, I agree with the criminal record check. Just put my two.
No, it's not. No, it's not. Okay, so there is two other things that there was concerns about. One of the things was, uh, section four, part five, B, C and D, being driving convictions. Um, so these would be on people's driver's abstract and my opinion personally is that, my understanding is if, if you're, um, I guess, not, I mean, I don't have the bylaw right in front of me, but it has to do with like speeding tickets and, and all that kind of stuff. Where is it? Right here? Okay, right, so my understanding is if you have, if, if you have any of these convictions that, um, that MPI would pull your class four license, right? If this was on your driver's abstract, then you wouldn't.
If you were a normal driver, they would pull.
Right, so, but.
That reminds us being a town.
So our thing is, is that if they're gonna pull the license anyways, then why should we take it out of the bylaw? I mean, it's, it, it, it's, uh, it's almost like just reiterating that this is what is, um.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I thought that. Can I just interrupt for a second? I thought that you guys had a meeting with the cab drivers-
We did.
And that you were gonna come back with recommendations for a new bylaw at this meeting.
Well, change this to the bylaw. So, but I mean, we can't-
But it just seems like we're having this negotiation process all over again.
So they want it out. They want that, that section to be totally removed, and, and we felt that if their license was going to be pulled anyways, then yeah, it might be kind of redundant to have it in the bylaw, but what's the big deal if it's in the bylaw?
Cause you guys have the bylaw for ten years, they take my license.
Appreciate it. We're, we're gonna hear what these guys have to say.
I would like to understand that element better though. So you're saying that if I have a class four license and I get convicted of an offense relating to robbery or extortion, I lose my class four license?
No, 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 no.
Is that just-
A driver, that's the driving conviction.
So if I get convicted of dangerous driving?
Yeah.
I lose my class four license.
Can I see?
So that's one of the clauses, right?
I guess the point-
I need an answer to that though. Is that, is that what you're saying? Is that, is that what I understand?
I think the point was, if MPI C was, if they were gonna pull your license, why are we saying, well, we'll do that? Because MPI C is going to pull their license anyways.
We're talking about, you're talking about B, C, and D? So, so, okay, so B is within a five-year period immediately preceding the date of application, has been convicted of careless driving pursuant to the Highway Traffic Act. C is within a two-year period immediately preceding the date of application, has been convicted of any offense not listed above contrary to the Criminal Court of Canada, and I can all read them out too if you like, the Controlled Drugs and Substances Act, the Food and Drug Act, or any similar acts or any other, in, of any other jurisdiction. This includes trafficking, possession for the purpose of trafficking, cultivation of controlled substance, dangerous driving, driving while over point zero eight blood alcohol level, impaired driving, refusal to provide a blood, a breath, blood sample, an offense relating to robbery, extortion, an offense relating to criminal negligence, homicide, bodily harm, assault, kidnapping, or abduction, a sexual offense, or offense relating to corrupt public morals. And then D is, has been convicted of a total of three offenses under the Highway Traffic Act, the Driver and Vehicles Act, or any similar acts of any other jurisdiction within a two-year period immediately preceding the date of application. I can't imagine why we'd wanna move any of that out.
So the issue is the timeframe then, for ten years? I mean, I'm in the same spot. I, I don't want somebody picking me up in a cab that has a-
That was another concern that isn't addressed enough.
A conviction of robbery or extortion.
Oh, I don't want people in there-
I'm sure you don't, but the point is, is that if the bylaw is gonna have these things in there, then it needs to recognize them.
What I'm talking about is the speeding, you get three speeding tickets, you can't drive taxi for ten years.
So it's, it's the timeframe that you're concerned about? I mean, if you-
No, it's the speeding ticket.
So three speeding tickets is okay, and they should still be able to go?
The first one there, trafficking, extortion, robbery-
I think we're talking about two different parts of the bylaw.
... weakness, whatever. I don't want those in my taxi yet. They should be in the taxi.
That's what we're talking about right now.
The rest goes into this category, that category, this category, and maybe he was jaywalking.
It doesn't say anything about ten years.
And three speeding tickets.
It doesn't say anything about ten years.
I wanna set rise, we don't want these people in there.
It's, this is the issue we're problem with, within ten years.
And in regards to the speeding tickets, I believe that should be left up to MPI. If I get too many tickets, then they're gonna take my license away. It's not your job, it's MPI's job.
Sorry, I think that you're maybe misinterpreting a little bit. So when it's talking about the ten years, it doesn't have anything to do with speeding tickets. So section A, all of these things listed under section A are what would be included in the ten years. Anything in B, C, and D has its own timeline. So within a five-year period, within a two-year period, and within a two-year period. So in two years, I know that in two years, if you get three speeding tickets, they're gonna pull your license whether you have a class four license or not. So again, it might be redundant to have that in our bylaw, but what we're saying is if you get convicted of three offenses within a two-year period, we don't feel that it's gonna be safe for you to drive the public. In two years, if you have been convicted of anything contrary to the Criminal Code, Controlled Drugs and Substances Act, or the Food and Drug Act, that we don't feel that it's gonna be safe for you to drive the citizens of our community around. And within five years, if you have been convicted of careless driving, that we don't think that it's gonna be safe for you to drive cab. Ten years has nothing to do with B, C, or D. The ten years is only sexual offense, homicide, negligence, kidnapping, abduction, robbery, extortion, driving under the influence, trafficking, and dangerous driving. That's what the ten years refers to, and you have to be convicted. So it, it doesn't have anything to do with speeding tickets. I think that that was a little bit of a misunderstanding. The B, C, and D have their own timelines for, for Highway Traffic Act.
I, I agree with A. The B and C, I feel is redundant, and for C and D, I think should be left up to the motor transport board to take your living away from a person. I don't know how many miles you guys put on this day, but I can tell you, I put on three hundred twelve hours a day. Now, in that three hundred twelve hours a day, I run into lots of situations, icy road conditions, a dog going over in front of me, a pothole, where I may dodge or swerve, and a police officer behind me. You're doing dangerous driving. We're car charging you for imprudent driving.
So again, we discussed this when we had our meeting, that there's an appeals process, right? So we're talking about if you got three speeding tickets and we, we pulled your license, you can appeal that. And if you come to us and maybe your speeding tickets were, you were going two kilometers over, and that's what your speeding tickets were for, you come to us and you appeal that. Same thing with dodging a pothole, or dodging a dog, or anything. We have an appeals process for a reason, because we realize that everything doesn't fit into the same cookie cutter, right? So I don't think that we're willing to move on those points. But again, I mean, we do have appeals processes for a reason, right? So, and then that was the last concern that was brought up, was the appeals process, was that there's one person, there's the, what is it, the designate?
Chief Financial, it's Randy.
Right, so there's, right, so there's, there's one person that you go to make your appeal to, and they had concerns with that. So I don't know what the solution for that is, but that was-
So you're, what, what are we looking at, like a body of three people and a, and a majority would rule, or a three-person appeal board, or what?
I know, I know the CAO does have concerns with that policy as well.
That being one person, yeah, three makes more sense.
Cause it puts it all on one person.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to see it as more one person.
So, okay.
Yeah.
The view of policy.
I have another concern with, with, with the wording of our bylaw, because it, a lot of these things we're talking about is a one-shot deal. If you pass the test, you're in. There's no retest, there's no future test, it's just you're in. And then normality is what it is. So it's sort of like that snapshot in time we're putting individuals through, and we assume, well, today we, we, you passed the test, therefore you're good for the next, the rest of your life.
It's annual. They have to renew their license annually, like just with a business license.
So, okay, so to renew their license, they're gonna experience all these processes and annual fees?
Mm-hmm. It's the same with any place that you work.
So, so if, if that's the case, why do we put a two-year window and stuff on things if we're renewing it annually? Doesn't make sense.
Because if you're, you're a five-year ban on something and you come the next year, now it's a four-year ban, then it's a three-year, and so you, you work your way down. I, I think that's why it's there.
Well, and also, so if you have a new driver coming in-
It says five years, you don't fly in five years.
So if you have a new driver that's coming in that hasn't driven cab before, you want to make sure that they have a clear history, that you're going to feel comfortable with them being in that seat, right? So that's why those things have some timeline. So if I, if somebody comes in and applies for a license today, and a year ago they were convicted of something, we want to make sure that that's captured and it's not just from today forward, right? So if, anytime in the past five years you've been convicted of one of those offenses, right?
Oh, okay. Well, I, I guess my concern now becomes is, uh, we're, we're, maybe we're becoming, moving too far into the realm of policing?
We don't have a choice in that.
Yeah, we don't have any choice.
That's the illness that was put on us.
Do you need, do you need, do you need, do you need deregulations of taxis to improve